So we'll touch base again. Town auditors. And we will be setting the two thirteen tax rate. Education tax rate. So with that, we need a motion.
Motion.
All in favor.
Approval of the minutes eight, eight thirteen.
All in favor. You're an abstention. Payroll eight eleven thirteen to eight sixteen thirteen in the amount of five thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars fifty-three cents. Motion. No, no. Eight sixteen in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and one seventy-seven. We had a check in there. It was a corrected check because the first one apparently got lost. Had a refund of ninety-four hundred dollars. Tam Waste Management thirty-three and change. Our Heating Oil seventy-eight seventy-eight. Those are some of your large items brought that up to that figure. Now you can have a motion warrants. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Our mail. That's all within our mail. Okay, we have a letter from the auditors. Shields and Baker. According to the letter, custodian of payroll records, we're requesting that you provide us with copies of the following. According to one VSA SS three one seven B payroll checks stubs for the following weeks. Five seventeen, five twenty-four, five thirty-one, six seven, six fourteen, six twenty-one, six twenty-eight, seven five, seven twelve, seven eleven, seven twenty-six, eight two, eight nine, up to thirteen. According to the statute, you have three days to produce these documents or communicate the reasons why they're not available. And that is our mail. What happened to the form four one one? Don't know. That's what I was digging in there and I did not find it. Must've got mixed up with something else.
What was it?
It was from the Listers. It was the green list.
Because I remember seeing it earlier and...
Was it this one?
Yeah, that'd be it.
Alright.
You've kept it over there.
I'm gonna make sure my other papers.
Thank you for hiding that. Okay. It was just the show that with the Listers, we have with the solar project. Four million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred dollars. The municipal total grand list on that particular will be two million six hundred and twenty-six ninety-four. Two million five hundred and eighty-six six twenty-five is backed out on the municipal because it's on the education. So that's on your solar project. The grand list gives you an idea on the evaluation and the backed out figure and what the town municipal grand list comes to. Now that concludes our mail. Okay, we'll jump on the computers real quick because that's a quick one. We talked about it last week about purchasing two new computers. A motion made and seconded for Clint to check into this as our lazy on and that lays on. And he did, and he has got prices of around fifteen hundred dollars each and is waiting for a go-ahead from this board. We will be replacing Ellen's and Karen's, Rich, because you weren't here last week. And Ellen's will replace this one. Karen's will replace the one out near the room for the lawyers that come into. So everybody will be updated with better equipment.
What are we doing with the old ones?
I'm not really sure yet. I guess look at the availability on what they would be functional maybe at the transfer station, maybe at Casey's. I'm not really sure. Didn't get to that bridge yet.
Okay.
Make a motion by two.
Okay, we have a motion to have Clint purchase these two for the town. We have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Just what are these being built or are these store bought, ready to go?
I believe they're ready to go. There's a...
Dells.
Dells.
Yep. That's why we put him on it. He understands here and what's going on, so. What we probably should do, if the auditors don't mind, I'd like to get the tax rate set.
I don't know.
Okay. We have two thousand thirteen tax rate, town of Pownell. Town general tax of zero point two one seven. Local agreement, state education tax, zero point zero zero three one. Town road tax, zero point one eight two seven. Total municipal tax rate of zero point four zero two five. Sewer bond flat tax rate per parcel, developed seventy-six dollars, undeveloped thirty-eight dollars. State education tax, homestead, one point three one four three. Non-residential, one point three eight four seven. Homestead rate, one point seven one six eight plus bond, seventy-six hundred dollars. Non-residential rate, one point seven eight seven two plus bond, seventy-six dollars.
Do you want to go over the due date so everybody knows when the taxes are due?
Yeah, we'll get to that. Let me give total town education from last year to this year. Homestead, last year of two thousand twelve, one point six four eight zero. Now is one point seven one six eight. That is a plus six point eight eight cents. Non-residential, one point seven eight eight two. To two thousand thirteen is one point seven eight seven two. That is minus point one zero cents. With that, I need a motion to set the tax rate.
Don't like it, but make a motion to set the tax rate.
This is education, so we have no hands on this, folks. So we have a motion.
Go over to the top part right here.
The whole tax rate.
The whole tax rate.
Did you read the top part? So they know where the increase is coming from?
They just read the whole page there.
Comparison. Have we done?
What are you pointing to, Michael?
Town General Fund, twenty twelve is point two three four nine, it's now point two one six seven.
Yeah, okay. Town General Fund, zero point two three four nine, two thousand thirteen, zero point two one six seven minus one eight two cents. That was us.
Yeah.
You like that? Me too. That was the part that didn't hurt. Now can we set the tax rate?
Motion to set the tax rate.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Count auditors.
Can you slide this in a bit? It's not up here, buddy.
Are you afraid?
Start us off. We just have a few things. And again, we appreciate this time. Last time we were here, Ellen wasn't here and I guess we could kind of table that situation. We were looking for the town's policy and attendance of seminars. And for reasons, emergency type reasons, person, the individual couldn't attend. What's the town's policy? They said, really, well, look, I think you've got a letter from that person and you've got a letter from us on that question. Could that be untabled and...
I don't think there's anything in the policy set that says it. Because accidents come up, people get sick, things happen. So, you know, I think that's the whole thing.
Well, I understand that, you know, and of course Vermont League of Cities and Towns are going to be paid anyway. That's an obligation and a responsibility. But I just wondered about the taxpayers. The taxpayers are out about a hundred dollars. We're not talking a lot of money here, but still a hundred dollars is a hundred dollars.
The thing is, did she ever get any of the paperwork? You should have asked that before you went off on this. My understanding is she probably received the same paperwork that you had from the VLCT.
Yeah.
So...
No, we had her pre-register. You probably know that from taking, you have to pre-register and as far as I know, she was. We tried to get her material while we were there. They wouldn't give it to us.
My answer to that is, we have not found, at least on the eight years, pretty near that I've been on this board, any abuse on people signing up for seminars and then not going. It's been a rare case when that happens. There's usually a very logical reason for it. And I don't believe we need to recreate a wheel and penalize, scrutinize, or set a policy until the time it comes where it's abused. And I don't see that happening. This is...
And I would like to speak on that.
Yeah, we're certainly going to let you. I, myself, I know several people that haven't attended different seminars for various reasons. It's not the end of the world. We've certainly wasted a certain lot more money trying to figure out why we should be doing things about something that doesn't amount to anything. For this amount of money, I think it's totally a waste of time and it's, if nothing else, it's insult to some of the character of the people that we got working with us.
I disagree with that characterization.
That doesn't surprise me at all.
It's, we were looking for a policy. A policy of the town so that down the road, let's say myself or anyone else, any other elected official signs up. And I'm sure it's happened in the past, has signed up to take something and not attended. The town pays their portion and shouldn't they be responsible to the taxpayers to say?
So what you're saying is they should pay them back?
Yes.
I think that's a bunch of bull. That's my voice.
How long in advance did you have to make that?
The cancellation or the...
No, the seminar.
I signed up for that seminar as soon as I received the paperwork, which I want to say was probably a good month in advance. And if I would have known at the time that something would have come up that I couldn't go, I wouldn't have signed up, obviously. At the time I signed up, the date was clear.
You didn't have your crystal ball out, is that it?
No, and I did call as soon as I knew, but it was too late, which was the day before.
My feeling is that...
And I could not, well, let me say, and I could not cancel, but I did request all paperwork. I would not have gotten the paperwork if I didn't sign up for it. I sign up for all seminars through the town so the town knows that I'm going to a seminar. I don't sign up for it on my own and ask for reimbursement down the road so that if I go or don't go, you know, I, I, I do things per the way they've always been done. I do the best I can. I do apologize. I felt bad about the money. I felt bad the way I was approached about it. I have no problem...
I don't think you have to defend yourself.
I know, but I have no problem...
Your status is proven through the years.
I have no problem with the question. I just have a problem the way it was presented, so that was it.
May I ask you a question, Ellen?
Of course you can.
How many seminars have you attended, on a guess, through your whole tenure here with the...
Twenty-something years here between the two positions.
Yeah, how many roughly?
I attend at least two a year, if not three to five a year.
And how many of those have you missed?
I can, I missed this past one, this one, and I think one, one time when we had a blizzard down here and it didn't blizzard up there and I could not get there. Again, they sent me the paperwork. I couldn't cancel it the morning of. That was an Emmerich seminar. And maybe one other one in twenty-something years.
Thank you.
Not too often, though.
Thank you.
Back to mine. You send a month in advance. My schedule changes within a day to two days.
And I am signed up for another one next month and hopefully I get to go to it. That is my plan. It's something I need to go to for my position and that is why I go, because I do learn things there. I pass them on to people and that's what the seminars are for.
That issue has come up previously. And it doesn't come up, I mean, it isn't, I'm not picking out any certain person or anything else, but a few years back, it was abused a little and we did talk about it. And we said, well, we just said, look, we'll talk to the person. If you're going to sign up, that's fine. If an emergency comes, that's fine. It's not a big deal. But, you know, don't make a habit of just going, of signing up and then not going.
Well, yes, as I am a taxpayer also...
And that's what we discussed. And that was about five years ago, the last time.
Right.
So I'm going to say, within twenty years, you missed five, I don't consider that abuse in it.
I think it was two.
Two or three tops.
I think that's a pretty good track record.
Even walking away from Ellen at this point, the question was asked, what policy do we have? I would entertain it. We get a motion from the board that we, at this point, do not need a policy, or do we?
I think that what we ought to do is if we see any, just like we did before, five, six years ago.
But that's...
If you see somebody that signed up for two, three and they didn't go, you say, hey, look, you know, you're costing the town money. And then it'll usually curb itself. It isn't like it's a huge thing, but we don't just want people signing up.
So is this board in majority of belief that we do not need written policy on that status?
Make a motion, we don't need policy.
Thank you. You have a second on it?
State's attorney tool, but...
I need a second. We have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The other thing we had tabled was the town insurance. Can we untable that? Is there a...
Town insurance. First look at my notes from that. I've read them. Was it last week? Yep. Okay. Yep, it's in the minutes, but just for the pleasure of asking. I ran the numbers of this year's policy for comparison of last year. And workers' comp, and I did all this last week. It's in our minutes, but I'm going to read them. Last year, workers, one eight, one eight eight. In two thousand thirteen, that was increased at twenty-two, one sixty-nine. Property, twenty-three, zero sixty. This year it's twenty-five, oh fourteen. Public officer, twenty-six, forty-five. This year, twenty-six, eighty-eight. Employer practice, fourteen, thirty-three. This year it's fourteen, fifty-nine. General liability, eight thousand three dollars. This year, eight thousand seventy-nine. Law enforcement, four eighty-eight. This year, five hundred. Business auto, last year forty-nine, seventeen. This year, fifty-nine, fifty-three. Treasurer bond, nine seventy-five. This year, nine seventy-five stayed the same. Total of fifty-nine, seven oh nine. Last year, sixty-six, eight thirty-seven. This year, a difference of seventy-one, twenty-eight overall.
What we had asked, we didn't particularly ask for that, but we appreciate that. What we had asked for was, and I'm referring to your minutes of eight one, the town's insurance. You responded that, can I read it? Can I read your town insurance? In response to a town auditor's insurance question, the cost for insurance coverage increased from sixty-one, three forty-one to sixty-six, nine seventy-six. That's in conflict with what you read there for fiscal year fourteen. The town did obtain quotes from Vermont League of Cities and Towns and VLCT representatives visited the selectmen more than once to present their insurance products. The Wills Agency also provides input regarding coverage differences and limits. There were also discussions regarding whether emergency services wish to come under the umbrella of the town if they were to go with VLCT and benefits of staying local. The Wills Agency is very helpful and service-oriented and they also insure the town of Shaftesbury and North Bennington. The question we had was why they appear to be not, we checked with Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They were here for a, not a quotes, but were here to introduce their product line on six, fourteen, twelve. We spoke to one of the people that was here. They haven't been here since.
Last June, a year ago, last year.
Right, before twelve thirteen.
And they did have a quote, no?
That was last year, though. And what their problem was, the fire department and emergency personnel are handled under, is it workers' comp or what is it? There's some policy that VLCT does not handle.
Right.
Which would mean that for them to fall under our policy, they would have to go elsewhere to find policy elsewhere to cover that.
Right.
So we found it logical to stay.
Right, I've got the minutes from the four, six fourteen of twelve, and that's exactly what it says in the minutes.
Okay, so what is your question then?
My question has been from the outset, and Betty and I both asked, why isn't we, VLCT, did not get an opportunity to quote for fiscal year fourteen, nor did anyone else? And we're just wondering why it would seem like an organization like theirs, or even local Lambigan and Thomas Shaw's, any numerous local agencies would not be coming up and presenting their lines to you so that you could make a comparison and possibly look to save the town some money at the same time improve service?
Well, VLCT is self-explanatory.
Right.
There was no reason to go back and ask them for the same reason unless they've changed their policies to cover what they didn't cover before. There was no reason for that. As far as the rest goes, I personally forgot that it was due in July. And when I realized it, it was July. And I think the rest of the board fell under that same thing. We had already gotten our policy quote from Wills, which we've done business with, and they do a hands-on with us, which is very good. I personally believe we should have checked with other ones, but I believe our time restrictions and being tied up with different matters that we had, that some of us on the board have been here long enough, forgot it. Some of us that are new on the board, didn't realize that it was overlooked. It's been taken care of. There wasn't time to fool around when you got a policy due.
Right.
The town's insurance is more important and we've had, as you well know, more to deal with on extras than we usually do.
I can understand that. And that's, what you said is very reasonable, but the only thing I would ask is that, you know, the town did obtain quotes from, they did not obtain quotes from Vermont League of Cities and Towns for fiscal year two thousand thirteen to fourteen. And that's a distinction, you know.
How many times will I have to explain to you that they don't cover certain things?
Right.
I'm not going to explain it again.
Your minutes are...
I've done it twice.
Your minutes are misrepresentative of an organization that shouldn't be misrepresented. And, you know, that's all we're saying. So what we're, what we're asking is, and it would seem like an appropriate and a fiscally responsible thing to do, is to ensure that before July first of next year that you do get quotes. There are a lot of...
More than likely we will, but unless Vermont City, Towns, and Leagues changes their status, then I don't believe they will be on board with us for that reason again.
Again, I think it's important that the town have opportunities there. But that's, thank you. The only other thing I have, I have actually two things. I received a, as auditors, we received a, I hope we can bring this subject up. If you would like not to, we will not bring it up. Pay stubs. We received a communication dated the twenty-third from Pierre Holden, the town attorney. I'm sure that you've gotten that. We got it from a copy, so we're assuming that you've read that too. And what we're, he agrees with us. He agrees with the orders in the first paragraph that we have permitted public inspection and copying of individual salaries and benefits of public employees. However, and he clarifies this, and we have a copy of that here and we looked at it, and that is for personnel records. We've never, ever asked for personnel records. And it would be way out of line for us to, relating to individual, including information in all files. We're not looking, we never ask for a personnel record, go into psychological, medical, special finances, anything at all of that nature. All we're looking for is the, to have access to the, and he agrees with us, for the pay stubs. We had a reason, we were checking, we were checking year-end totals for this past year. And we asked Lyndon, she complied. She gave us a payroll warrant for the last year of two thousand and twelve, and in there were the payroll stubs. Now, what difference is it? We can see them there, we can't see them now. What's the difference?
Same information is on your warrants.
The only thing that I can say to that is there's information on the pay stubs that goes into one's personal savings, whatever, on the pay stub, which is not public. The taxes, what's made, et cetera, et cetera, is, but if you have a IRA, a 401K, or whatever money goes into a savings, is not general public. That's a gray area. I don't understand it. It's been taken care of and it will be presented in a timely fashion.
What will be presented in a timely...
What you have requested.
Okay, okay. The only other thing I have, I have it with me. Give me a copy of that letter.
Which one?
The one I want to talk about the...
This one?
Yes. I'd like to read this into the record, so it's in the record. We have many instances where we have given you items and they never appear to be, come across the board. State, it's addressed to each and every one of you dated today, August fifteenth, and it's a policy, we're looking for a policy, on paying funds to elected officials in the first weeks of the new fiscal year. And recently, the last several years, members of the select board have taken their full twelve hundred dollar pay in the first part of the new fiscal year. While there is no law or regulation against this, what would happen if a felony occurred? Select board members resign, leave office in the first months of his term short of a full term. Will the balance of his pay be recovered? Should the difference in wages be prorated back to the town, the taxpayers? Is it a conflict of interest against the taxpayers of Pownell for the select board, selectmen to receive his or her pay and not perform as the electorate expected? Finally, is there any elected official in Pownell, is any elected official in Pownell able to secure his pay for the entire year of office up front? We're talking about like the zoning administrator, constable, the health officer, maybe the nine-one-one coordinator. I'd like that in the record if we possibly can, but I don't expect you to give me an answer tonight or give us an answer, but I would like to see if there's a policy on that.
I will answer, to my knowledge, absolutely not. Reason being is I tried to put that into place either a year ago or two years ago. And it wasn't for taking pay, it was for if something happened to a board member and they were unable, for good reason, not to finish their term. We've lost, unfortunately, a couple of members since I've been on the board. And I am a firm believer that the rest of their pay should go to their heirs. That, I feel, is no problem. I do feel that the next person coming in to fulfill the time span that's left should get prorated for that time. That was brought up. I was also talking about the fact that if a person signed up on the board and missed a certain amount of meetings, that their pay would be deducted from that. At that time with the members we had, that failed. And it hasn't been brought up again. So with that, there is no policy. My understanding, the town votes for the selectmen to get a certain amount of pay. That's divided up amongst five members. That's the policy.
So the nine-eleven coordinator could take her full yearly salary because it's voted as a lump sum? As well as the health officer, the treasurer, the town clerk?
Actually, those...
Actually, those have all been set up on a monthly. The board is always set up on a yearly. They can take it if they really, if they want to take it in the new, they've already, they started in March, so they're partway through their thing. If they so choose on the new fiscal year, they can take it. A lot of them wait to take it.
Until July.
Yeah, we know.
A lot of them do wait and some of them need it when the new year rolls over and, and they are, they've always been allowed to take it, yes. But everybody else is set up either on a monthly or a weekly and always have been.
Yeah, I know that that's the way that they've done it so far. I was just curious if, you know, because the Board of Selectmen can take their full amount of pay, the first of July.
They have taken the full, full amount of pay. I think, um, I remember previous Selectmen doing that also.
There have been quite a few, yes. Yes. I, I don't, I don't doubt that it's been done for many years. That's not the point. The, the question is, you know, whether or not you would consider making some kind of a policy to.
I don't, my own personal feeling. We have policies on a lot of things. Until we need something more clarified, which we've run into. We live in a policy world. Most of these people that jump on these boards, if they're doing it for the money, then they got more problems than the money they're getting. Uh, I got a sneaky feeling that they're doing it for other reasons. And to keep badgering and making more policies and making it more complicated for people that are damn close to volunteering their time as it is, I don't believe it's necessary at this point, my own personal feeling.
That's your opinion and that, and that's well taken, but it's still something that the, the board should look at and possibly discuss. You know, I mean, uh, we don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but it is something that, uh, you know, how, how the town is not, uh, with the deepest pockets in the world, I don't believe.
I often wonder on that statement.
Okay.
Because some of the things you've brought up have cost us a lot of extra footsteps.
What steps aside, we have, I know, you want to read this? You want me to read it?
No, I'll read it, but I had a couple of other questions first. Um, is there any, have you given any thought about getting bids for fuel, gas, propane and diesel? Um, I know that the other boards have done it. I've seen different bids going out. Uh, actually the Bennington Rutland Supervisor Union has got one in the paper this week. Shaftesbury had one not too long ago.
If I'm not mistaken, we just signed a warrant with our fuel oil.
I meant for prices for the full year. I, I meant to gear in to, to.
That I believe was a prepay, if I'm not mistaken.
A prepay?
Yes. And I was very impressed with the figure. I wish I could get it for that.
No, that's good. Uh, you know, I was just.
I do believe that this is not something that's overlooked, that it has been taken care of in previous years and the same this year. Uh, believe it or not, there are.
Years we've tried to get, actually we've, uh, fell in with a fuel oil company that's been, they've been very good to us and they take care of the fire department. And they give us a very good price. I don't think the others would beat it.
Good.
I mean, that's my own opinion.
Contrary to belief, we do spend some time on here actually thinking about this stuff.
Steve, there's no doubt in my mind, but there's a lot of stuff that you need to think about, you know. Uh, the other question I had was again on the twenty thousand dollars to the general account from the road account. Did you get a specific accounting for that?
I thought I handled that well, but. Ellen, would you like to handle that better for me? Because if I'm not mistaken, we have what I said before, out of that, we have materials, we have treasurer's pay, um, insurance is out of that.
No, the twenty thousand administrative assistance pay used to come out of road and general both. Um, for work done. We had spoken to, I'm gonna have to double check this, but anyway, we had spoken to someone and I will get you a definite and everything went in the future, but we can, um, budget in the road and the wastewater because our administrative assistant does work and so do a couple of other people. Work for all the different departments and it's making the budget more equalized because the administrative assistance pay comes straight from the general. The twenty thousand covers her share of doing the road, um, stuff that she has to do, um, anything else. And the same with the wastewater. She does other stuff, the payroll, but it's not just the general fund's responsibility to pay for all that.
I can understand that.
And I think technically, I think if you guys look it up, you can take money from the road for the general. Cause I know that's one of your issues and, and I, um, actually am in process of double checking that.
Well, you can, you can borrow, you can borrow money from the road for the general, but that was, my point, my point in this thing was.
Separate their general and road. Everything is out of one.
Right, but it needs to be separated on the books. I mean, for budgets purposes.
Some, some people do not. There are some towns, I've been to seminars that state that.
Okay, well, anyway, I just, um, the twenty thousand dollars, what I, what I don't understand is if you budget the, the entire administrative assistance pay in the general budget and then you budget another twenty thousand in the road budget and another twelve hundred in the wastewater budget for the same thing.
I understand what you're saying.
Totally you're budgeting fifty thousand dollars. But you're not, what you're, you're not separating it. You're budgeting her total pay in the general budget and, and your total pay and, and whatever else total pay.
And I'd, I'd like to ask why, why don't you come to me and ask me these questions instead of coming to the board and giving me an opportunity to answer them? I think we've had this conversation, the last meeting that I did show up to for the Select Board. I said, I said to, um, Ray, I said, Ray, how about giving me some of these issues that you have because I would love to look at them? And if there is corrections that I can make or answers that I can give you, I would love to give them to you. You don't always, you're supposed to be working with the treasurer and, and some of it and, and I don't get asked too many questions. Cause I probably could get you those answers if you ask me.
Okay, so I'll, I'll put that in writing to you then. And the other question I had is the same with the five thousand dollars that was budgeted, actually was a ballot article for the police equipment fund was paid to the general fund also.
Because the police equipment fund is in the general fund.
There's a special fund.
Yes, the money, it's not a separate bank account. You, you.
So it's not, it's not a special fund.
It is a special fund. They don't have to be in separate bank accounts as long as they're tracked by a, a counting system and they are. Neither is this transfer station fund.
All right, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you about it afterwards because I'm not.
I'd like that in writing please. Thank you.
Okay.
We have one more letter we want.
Yep, just one more letter. You guys have been waiting for this forever and, uh, you know, you can have it. This is a letter that we sent to the Attorney General in Montpelier on May seventeenth. The undersigned auditors of the town of Pownell formally request that you look into our findings of what we believe is a misuse of public funds. We have documented payroll overages, misuse of sick and vacation pay, possible intimidation of previous elected officials, payments for no-show work and either an excess of data entry errors or total incompetence of the administrative office for the years of two thousand and nine through two thousand and twelve totaling more than forty-three thousand dollars. Pownell recently concluded one of the largest sewer products, projects in the state of Vermont, during which time federal and state monies poured into the town with little oversight on other work functions of the town. This project started in the early two thousands and given what we have found in the last four years, we can only guess how much more there is in previous years. We have tried since last October of two thousand and twelve to convince the Select Board that we believe there is a problem to no avail. The Select Board feels that because this happened in previous years, we should forget about it and move forward. As elected auditors, we feel that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of Pownell. Therefore, we are asking for your help. And the Attorney General referred this to the state police and the sergeant, um, at the state police has interviewed, um, us. And what does the, whatever information they have gotten from us, they still have it because the investigation is ongoing.
It's interesting how you took a read on this. I'm gonna let each member of the board speak, but I'm gonna air my feeling on this. Cause if I'm not mistaken, after several heated discussions with Mr. Shields and then when you got on board, you joined right in nicely and we had several discussions with you to bring this stuff forward to the board. Don't shake your head yes, cause you, no.
Just interrupt you.
No, you won't interrupt me. I'm gonna finish.
I think this is inappropriate.
I don't give a damn.
Okay.
You were told to bring this before the board. You had it in writing to bring it before the board. We even scheduled it on the third meeting, so it wouldn't be inconvenient for the two of you. You chose to write us a letter saying you'd rather go into an executive meeting, which you've stated in letters to us before, that you don't go into executive meetings out of the public's view. So a little conflict there, but we'll forget that. We don't have executive meetings, as you well know. We have to have a special meeting, which a special meeting, then the board can vote to go into an executive meeting for personnel or yield or whatever we have to, that shouldn't be in the public's eye at the moment. That's what we requested you to come in for. When you come in that evening, did you bring us information? No. Did you say that you were going to? You said you'd taken another avenue. You blew the forty-three thousand dollars out there, but with no evidence, no backup hearsay. This board or any other board sitting here cannot work with the taxpayers on hearsay. If you bring us evidence, we would gladly look at it. But you trot your butt upstate either to the state auditors, Attorney General, state police or wherever. If you read the manual on what auditors do, it comes to this table. If this board ignores it or tells you to hit the road, then you go elsewhere. You chose to go elsewhere first and then try to throw mud on our face. Do I think it's appropriate? I think you people are out of line one hundred percent.
And we do give you every opportunity to respond to this.
You did like hell. You didn't bring it in here. We told you to bring.
You told us to bring it in and throw it on the table.
Not, not the hearsay. No, no. You bring it in. We'd have gone into executive session and discussed it. It did not. We've had where two Select Board members could meet with you privately. We've had that. Not acceptable. This is a board. You bring it to us. We go into the, whatever we have to to handle it. That was not our option. You did not allow that to happen. Instead, you started an investigation which goes to back, you're worried about Ellen's hundred dollars that she missed a meeting. What do you suppose this costs us to talk to lawyers to resolve some of this damn problem that shouldn't exist to start with? Created by you.
Let me say.
Oh, no.
Both of you. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it is.
We did not create.
No.
I think you'll find that you did.
You missed the vote. And I'll say something now if I can, okay? We have tried, I've been since here, since I've been here and of course when Betty's been here too. We have tried to work with you people and to show you the things that we have. And there was a way. We brought it to you. We brought it from the U S Labor Department. There was a way to do this in-house and correct it. You wanted no part of it. You, you know, you, what you want is the material for us to bring this material and leave it with you. You've already approved this material once as Selectman. You've already put your John Hancock on it, approved it. And we offered to come, with two of you, three of you, discuss this. You could bring it back to the board, but no, that wasn't good enough. This last time we thought that possibly we would be able to be, come here, but we were given a letter, drop the material off. We want it here. That's simple as that.
No, 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 no. That was not the original. The last letter you got was to get us this material after the charges were filed against us. Was to get, either you bring it or get it to this table so we could see what it was. Right now, thanks to the two of you, we have an investigation going on about us and we still don't know what it's about. Now you tell me that's correct.
We have a right, a common defense in the, in the court of law is both parties have to have the same information. So you, you're winging it buddy, and I'll tell you what. And, and you go to court on this and we don't have the information or we can't defend ourselves, you're gonna come out looking like an ass.
Fine. We have tried many times, but this information that you say we're winging it on, we have tried to share this information. We shared it with the former order limit, former order that was here.
Exactly right.
He agreed. He agreed. He went back and, because he was a man of record at that time. He tried to make some changes in that information. I didn't put that information in there. That information is there. As far as charges, there's no charges. What we're, what we brought to the Attorney General and he brought to the investigative arm, the state police, is the fact is that we've given them information which we feel and they feel apparently that warrants their looking into it.
No, it's not done yet, so it may come back to bite you.
It may, it may. It very well may. But what's happened in the interim, you should be aware of it, what's happened in the interim. Other organizations, other three-letter organizations like the IRS.
Oh, sure.
And the U S Law Department of Labor has got to look at it.
You know what I call this, Ray? I call it legal extortion.
It's not extortion.
Bull crap it ain't. This is a common.
This is a Select Board meeting.
This is a Select Board meeting. You bet your bippy it is. And I'm addressing you from a Select Board member. This has been going on since you were, excuse my folks, but I'm gonna take a little history here. Ever since you've been elected into your office. First of all, when you were working with Clint, you were, you were renegade. You did everything contrary to the rules and regulations and with, uh, the auditor's handbook and what have you. Those are set forth by the legislature, I'm under the assumption. Right? Okay. And here's another case where you're doing the same dang thing. Now, out of common courtesy, when you said you, we would get that information at a Select Board meeting, it wasn't presented. That tells me that you personally, that there's something wrong here.
There's definitely something wrong.
Yeah, and I think it's right there in that chair.
And also, when you and Clint were going over this, if I'm not mistaken, forty-three thousand dollars was not a figure.
Clint dropped out. He dropped out. He stopped.
But I think the figure was thirteen thousand or twenty. I don't know it bounced, bounced around.
Thirteen thousand or twenty? That's a lot of money for the taxpayers to be.
It is. And there's also a lot of difference. I wasn't good in math, but there's enough difference there. And then forty-three was a real difference. And with still no fact on, is it? Is, are these real figures? Are there assumptions that, well, this happened here, it must be still happening? Or John Q Public just bought himself a beach house with the extra. Where do we see as managers of this town, where do we see this, that, oh, this was a mistake. Oh, Ray, you made a mistake. Jeez, how do we correct this if we don't have it? Now, the state police have got it, investigators got it, Attorney General, whatever the hell's got it. Needed to come to this table first. Didn't need to go there.
Think to this table many times.
Not with the information you didn't. You come with hearsay and little stories, but never the facts of presenting.
We offered to sit down with you people many times.
Why didn't you bring it in that night when we set the meeting up?
What, this last time?
The time before, not the last time, because the last time.
The letter that we got, I don't have the letter with me, a, a two-sentence letter. Drop the material off.
That was, that was the last time. The time before in the minutes of our meeting. Would you like me to read them to you?
You can if you want.
Maybe, maybe we'll.
I was filling in this. Over and over and we asked for this stuff. Back when the original figure came out at twenty thousand. Wait, you wait, you had your turn. Back when the original figure came out twenty thousand, we asked for this, everything. Did we get it? No.
It's my other file.
Then all of a sudden it dropped down to thirteen thousand. We still asked for it. Did we get it? No. Now all of a sudden it's gone to this investigation. Now it's up to forty thousand dollars. Do we still have the stuff on writing? No, we have a letter saying, oh yeah, we sent it to the state.
How many times since we've been bringing this to you have you voted at this table to put it behind us and forget about it? How many times have you voted to do that?
We went back and back and back.
Right. Well, you know.
We might as well vote on it not to do it. Do we get it anyways? No.
Not after you voted not to get it.
You guys supposed to work with us, not against us.
I did. We, we worked, we gave you three letters.
Yes, you're worried about her hundred dollars taxpayer's money? How much taxpayer money is this gonna cost?
I don't know. You're, you and I are taxpayers.
Damn right I am.
Let me ask you something, straight up.
Did you hear the new one, Ray?
Straight up. We have given you three written documentations of, of Fair Labor Standard Act imperiorities down at the wastewater treatment center. What have you done with them?
No idea.
If I'm not mistaken, we've been to, we've been to a seminar where we talked with an instructor, Clint talked with instructors. Don't interrupt. This lady was a super, she has multiple degrees in law. One of those, she's a specialist in F S L A. Clint talked with her over his lunch hour up there and she said, whatever we were doing is fine. We have a second opinion that night with another lawyer who also specializes in the Federal Labor Standard Act. And he said. And he said that we were all right. Now, that's two lawyers. Now, consequently, yeah, one was a freebie, because we were at a seminar, got the information from that. But why is it that you, as an auditor, coming to the select board with this stuff, cannot trust what we say when we, we've got multiple other, um, opinions from people that do this as a living?
We're, we're, you, you haven't, you haven't given us anything in writing, an opinion of anything.
We've given you three requests that you change the, what's going on down at the wastewater. You haven't addressed it at all. We gave you documentation from the US Department of Labor, why you had to do it.
And what was, what was that, what was that?
That documentation was about liability concerns. The fact is that the time was not correct. The record-keeping is vital, important. And you're in violation of that. And we brought to your attention.
Now, let me ask you a question. Is this your opinion?
No.
That you brought forward to somebody else?
No, it's the Labor Board's opinion.
Well, then, why didn't they send us a rec, a letter? Why didn't we hear from them? We didn't, as far as I know.
Oh, I thought you wanted the auditors to work with you. We brought, we brought the information.
But the thing is, you've gotta have all this documentation. Well, I think it's about damn time we started getting some of that.
All right. With regards to two thousand and two thousand twelve auditor findings, the town auditors did not present the information as requested by the select board, letter dated four twenty-two thirteen. The auditor's response, letter four twenty-three thirteen, informed the board that unless they, the select board and the auditors only, met an executive session, the auditors would move forward in the best interest of the panel's taxpayers. In response, letter dated five-two thirteen, the board again asked that the information be brought forward for the selectmen's board's review. That was to be brought to us. You chose to take it in another direction. We, knowing, we're not all idiots here. We've learned a lot through the last few years. We know that we can't talk about this stuff in open forum. It would have been, as you well know, would have gone into an executive session, because somebody certainly would have made the motion. And you would have had your dream come true. We'd have been in an executive session discussing this with the forty-three thousand dollars that you're claiming, or errors, and mistakes, whatever.
Do you have a copy of that letter, the four twenty-two letter?
I have a copy. I have a copy of that.
I do too at home. I was just, you know.
I'm sure I do. I have a folder at home. I.
Just to see the tone.
But we, we were all prepared for that, Steve.
Then why didn't you bring it?
Because, uh.
Did you think we were gonna have an open session and say, oh, Linda, you got fifty cents the other day, that's wrong. Oh, this one got that? Do you think we've learned nothing over the years?
There's one thing that you really need to learn, that these meetings are televised. You know, they can go out of this area.
I'm aware of that.
That's what we're trying.
Don't we look good?
Yeah.
We look like a bunch of jerks down here, with forty thousand dollars floating around. It's been misappropriated.
Can I, can I say something here? I'm the newest board member here. I've done a lot of listening. I've tried to bring some common sense approach to some of the items. I'm not the smartest person sitting in this room by far. The one thing I think, from my point of view, as a selectman, as a freshman selectman, if you will, is we have an awful lot of letters. You folks are great at writing letters. I have yet to see one single spreadsheet with a number on it, other than what you say you've found. If there's a spreadsheet that says this, this doesn't equal to that, something we can compare it to, I, I would like to see that. Uh, I would like to see a spreadsheet of these findings with columns, and rows, and figures, and something viable that we can compare it to. And I'm not trying to be offensive or defensive here, okay? But that's my point of view on this, is, you know, we say, you say. They say.
Well, that's why we reached the point. I know what you're saying, and that's, you know, and that's very well said.
Do you think that is out of the line, or out of the realm of auditors to provide that?
What we put together, what we have taken a long time to put this information together. And you cannot just give it to a person. Uh, in our interview, it took, it took a long time for.
We're not the person, we're the board.
Took a long time for the investigator to get a handle on what he was looking at. I'm not saying we're, I'm not a.
Even if it was a bits and pieces, uh, something. Something that you could, that, that is in black and white, you could say, well, yeah, that certainly doesn't add up.
We were prepared back in May, uh, May, April, to come in here with the, we had, Betty and I had put it together. We had put together a summary for two thousand and nine, so that you could actually look at this. We had made seven copies. So that you could take a copy, look at it, and go page by page through it. So you would say, they're right. They're right. But when we show you that, and we have tried to show you that all the time, what would you do with that? What would you do with that information?
I don't know, because I haven't seen it.
I'm one of five. I ain't never seen a paper with figures on it.
Okay, no.
Only one that says twenty thousand, thirteen thousand.
But your name is on the warrants as being approved. Obviously, you're looking at the warrants like we look at the warrants.
Yep.
I don't think you are.
How much time you put in a week on warrants?
Well, about an hour.
I bet you put more than that in.
No, I don't.
Well, some of your trying goes back to when you first got on as an auditor. If I'm not mistaken, one of your first trying to work with us was going to the state auditor. Unbeknownst to us.
No, no.
Or it wasn't.
The state auditor was a mentor at that time. The deputy state auditor was a mentor of mine, and gave me information, and he made concurrence. I didn't go to the state auditor.
You didn't.
Until October.
Okay.
October of that year. So I wouldn't go that first time out of the gate.
Well, it was without our knowledge, though.
Right.
Because I also called Mr. Joyce up and talked with him.
Right.
On several different occasions.
Right.
As have I have talked to our new one that's up there again. And she knows, of course, nothing about this at the moment going on down here. And was quite interested.
Their whole focus has changed, which you're probably aware of.
I'm quite aware of, and her focus on why all this information is gone where it's gone, instead of to this table first, was quite inquisitive from her point.
Why don't you call Bill Sorrell?
I probably will.
Call Bill Sorrell's office.
Because I am quite interested in that myself. I, I think they need to see both sides of the street.
Absolutely. And they are. That's what they're looking into.
Yeah. But I think that they need to also know that we didn't get a chance to look at that. And being that they're the governing body of this town, it seems like this is the first approach.
Well, between films, newspaper clippings, letters, which we, always, it's important that we put everything in writing, because it's, it's a paper trail.
Yeah, you put a lot in writing, except for the figures. I mean, these letters, like I said, are great, but.
But all that verifies the fact is that we have tried numerous times, my, me by myself, working with Clint, trying to get together with you guys to get two, because that's what the auditor recommended. Two or three of you get together, we look at all this stuff, you bring it back to the full board. But that wasn't good enough, and it still hasn't been good enough. And now you're demanding, you know, just drop this material off here, you know?
No, no, no.
Drop it up.
No, no.
Bring it in.
The last letter was to get it here after the investigation had been started. To get it here, so we know as well. Before that, was a request for you to come in on your normal Thursday night meeting with that information. And you did not.
We've only started that normal Thursday nights recently. It isn't, isn't like it's.
Four months ago.
That's recent.
See, you, you love to twist things around, but it's, it's quite obvious.
We could have had these figures.
We had this information.
You absolutely could have had those figures. You're absolutely right.
You guys were so stuck up.
Oh, no.
Well, we didn't get it. That's the bottom line, and we had other people get it. So the bottom line is, you do your research, we're gonna do ours. Because what this does right now, this makes this town look foolish. And for somebody that says they care so deeply about how this town is run, and their taxpayers' money is spent, I find that very hard coming from you, on what I've seen you do in the past, and what I'm seeing you do in the present.
Did, let me ask you something, and then you tell me. You, I think you've answered this question before. I sent you a certified receipt, you as the board chairman, a letter back in October of last year. And I put in there that it was such of a confidential nature that it should be shared with you as the chairman of the board, and then get the board together, but not publicize it, because there was a fact that we had, had made some findings. What did you do with that letter? You read that letter?
That's right. I didn't see anything in there, other than information. There was nothing in there. And there's still nothing in there. What we've got right now.
Everybody else had a turn. I'm on a turn.
Yeah, go ahead there.
I, I usually take, go ahead, Dad. I know you'd like to run it, but. I still happen to be the chair of this, and I'm running it self. Go ahead, Ronnie.
I'd like to say that I think that this has been, been handled very badly, and without a doubt, a lot of animosity. And I said, I agreed with the auditors. The only one that did. I agreed with the auditors that we should either two guys go over there, I don't care who it was, get the information, or I guarantee the auditors, look, you're gonna come over? We're gonna sit down with you, the five selectmen, so that nobody gets embarrassed. We can go through this thing. There may be mistakes on both sides. But this pig-headedness saying, well, you didn't bring it in. Well, you didn't ask for it. Or this, that is where we went all wrong, as far as I'm concerned. And I think we ought to swallow the pride and say, look, in order to move this town forward, we have to get along, and it can't be all one way. I'm sorry, but it just can't be. And a lot of this, and as far as the documentation, there's been a lot of letters that have been written, and I agreed with a lot of them. And there's lots of times I vote against what the board said, because I feel that it's being a shutout. I can't go with that, which should, these people are elected officials too. The listers come in, everybody else, the treasurer, the town clerk has something to say. You know what? We bring them in, we let them talk. And I think that's what should be done. And if we have to do it in a, in a smaller group, fine. But let's get it out in the open, let's get this thing done, and get it corrected. I don't know what's right and what's wrong. I have no information whatsoever. But I think this is peddling back and forth, and going to lawyers, and all that stuff. All this doing, that's costing us some money. I'll tell you that right now. That's all I got to say.
Okay, we have some.
No, not shell. We haven't seen any, anything.
Okay. We have some members of the citizens of the town here. Is anybody like to say anything on this?
I'm Bill James, and I live on County Road, taxpayer, of course.
Billy, speak up just enough so we can hear you in the mic there. Thank you.
I'm Bill James, County Road, uh, life resident. And, uh, I, I guess I could say I appreciate what the auditors are doing, if they're finding something. Put it on the table, get it in the sandbox, spit it out, and present it to, to, to the board. It cannot be addressed. In the meantime, this is costing me money of the tax rate that was just set. And it's gonna be coming out of my, my, my wallet in November to pay taxes. Not only going to attorneys, the hours that you guys must be spending on looking at all this stuff. And if you're looking at all this stuff back in two thousand and nine, I have to question, are you being able to address the problems that you should be looking at in two thousand and thirteen? You can't be, you can't possibly be addressing everything you should be addressing if this job is so big as you're presenting, and there's so many, so many issues that have to be presented. Spit it out, Mr. Shields. Put it on a table. Get it in the sandbox, and everybody plays nicely. And stop costing me, the taxpayer, uh, legal fees. I assume you guys are getting a pretty good salary, if probably not enough.
We're the lowest paid.
Lowest, you're the lowest paid?
Yes. No, I take that back. The selectmen are the lowest paid.
Well, that's funny, that's funny, that's going.
Hourly rate.
If we're going south, let's get on the train going north. Someplace, hit a happy medium, and let's get it back on the track. Spit it out. I don't, I do not understand why we would need to have to go. Feel that you're pushed to go out of the, or up to Mount Pili to ask these questions. Why that can't, I don't see why that can't be resolved by every one of you guys. That's what you're here for, to represent me. I voted for probably every one of you guys. And if they can't do that, then coming election time, something changes. I agree with what Ronnie said. I'm not sure I have my thoughts together enough to.
No.
But I am upset with what I foresee you guys doing, and bringing issues that have no answers. I'm not sure the selectmen could make an answer for you, especially back in two thousand and nine.
There are, there are, there are answers, and there's, there's things that can be done. The taxpayers, we, we feel, right or wrong, we feel that they're wrong forty-three thousand dollars at least. And that's, that's only what we find. Somebody with more skill and.
Then put it on the table, and get, get that addressed so it's right going on from now. We don't need forty-three thousand next year, and forty-three thousand the year after that. You're getting into my pockets deep.
Well, there's been a lot of.
We are.
We've made a lot of.
Put it on the table, and let's say who we is, and get this thing straight. Get in the sandbox and play together, or go on the wall for timeout, as they would say in school.
Thank you, Billy.
Yes, Steve.
Yep.
I wasn't, I was gonna sit here and shut up.
No, don't. Join right in.
They all know I can shut up. My name is Jane Gardner, and I'm here because I've been trying to follow all this, as Bill has. A lot of my friends have that aren't here tonight, a lot of my neighbors, a lot of residents of the town of Pownell. I think we're tired. Uh, this should not be going on, guys, on anybody's behalf. If there are some issues, they need to be dealt with. I know Betty knows how to deal with issues. She knows how to deal with numbers. She's got a lot of experience with auditing. So does Bill. So do I. There are people that have done a lot of this, and through IRS audits, you have to have some numbers to work with. That's a perfectly legitimate request. I don't know how you wish to present the numbers. An audit, an IRS auditor would present them to you right here. They, they would do that. And I think in order to work through these issues, we're gonna have to start getting in the sandbox, Bill's words, and do these things together. I don't think, this is going nowhere. It's spending money that we shouldn't be spending, fighting with one another, instead of building our new town hall, if that's where we're trying to hedge.
That's where we're trying to.
You know, we've, we've already wasted a garage on it. If we have an issue, we need to know it, so our money doesn't keep leaking out of some kind of a hole. I agree with you, Betty. You don't put the money out a hole somewhere. If you know there's a hole, present the hole. But these guys can't work with anything if you don't give them anything to work with. I, I know how it got out of hand, because nobody can talk to one another. This is life. This is how people are like this. Unfortunately, we have a lot of strong-minded people trying to get their point across. And we've gotta come together. Or the citizens of the town of Pownell are gonna totally change up things. It's in the wind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Henry?
Henry Strowman. Well, I'll tell you, number one, I was unofficial for quite a few years. I know all about being chewed on, ragged on, whatever you wish to call. It's not a fun place to be. My, the only reason I am here is just because, through the grapevine, I've heard that there's hard feelings between auditors and our board of selectmen. And I'm sure I'm right on that.
Okay.
But anyways, just, I'm gonna say the same thing that Jane just said, and everyone else has said. Listen, auditors, if you've got it, lay it on the table. And I don't care who is sitting there. If you've got something that has anything to matter with it, of any number, of any number, I wish that you would lay them on the table, so that this board can say, hey, how did you arrive at that? You tell them. The second, the second you tell them, the second you tell them, I am sure that they all have enough brains. that they all have enough brains to evaluate it and give you an answer. These people aren't stupid. They're just as smart as you are, whether you have, regardless of a degree. We have all add and subtract. We all know what an eraser is. We all know what lead is. And as long as, and if you don't lay anything there, I think you have wasted these people's time to move this town forward. I really do. Now, does that mean that you shouldn't come here and say, hey, we've got a problem? Well, I guess that's up to you folks. But I do know, right now, that if someone had my paperwork sitting in a state police office, I think I would say my talking is over. That's all I've got to say, I guess. Because you have nothing more to say until you get a report. That's my opinion. If you wanna go hire someone, spend some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't spend any more.
We haven't spent anything.
What can I say? It's been said. Well, except.
Come on up here, Frank.
Didn't accept.
Except. Okay, couple of issues. I agree with Henry. If, if this is going upstate, stop talking as far as going back and forth with what you're doing tonight. This, this is becoming, this is becoming nothing more than a show for the citizens who watch cable TV. That's what this has become. The issue here is that if there is, the auditors find a problem, bring the problem to the board of selectmen, either work with the board of selectmen or get out of the way and let them solve the problem and stop this inflammatory rhetoric that we hear continuously every time you folks get together. I agree with Henry. Stop talking. If, if you've taken it to the Mount Pili, let Mount Pili come back with an answer, an answer, and go forward from there. And quite honestly, it's asinine that it ever got that far. It never should have gotten any further than this table. Right here, lay it out and go forward from there. I, that, that, it boggles my mind that you have spent a year going around and around and around with this stuff.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, nothing before. I am very pleased that we have this opportunity to have some local people step forward. The main reason for these being televised is so public does understand what's going on, what's taking place in our town and how it's taking place. Uh, we certainly appreciate to have the input, the taxpayers. They're our neighbors, they're our friends. We need to work for them, they need to work with us. We all have got an issue here. We all need to work together to resolve it. I personally want the taxpayer in this town to understand what the issue is, how it's gotten to the point it is, and if they feel the need to get involved, to get involved. We are gonna do diligence on finding out what the problems are here. We are gonna do diligence in correcting them. It's not because they were brought before us by you two auditors. It's because we took an oath to do that, and we took this position to start with. And most of us are either lifelong residents of this town or damn close to it. We care about the town, that's why we're doing what we're doing. We're doing it to the best of our ability, and we intend to continue to do such. If anybody has anything else, if not.
I like the motion, we move on tonight. I think we've covered this over and over and over.
So would you like, we have nothing before us, would you like that to be a motion? Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.